I told you that they retrained me after three weeks. Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council meeting for Wednesday, October 7th, 2020. If you could all please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Griscoviac.
Here.
Councilmember Kicker.
Here.
Councilmember Demmer.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Wells.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is to adopt this evening's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Kicker. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And the agenda is adopted. We have one proclamation this evening, and that is to proclaim October Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Alexandra House has asked the city council to proclaim October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. In lieu of displaying all the proclamations from the cities within Anoka County at Alexandra House's canceled Hope Fest event, Alexandra House has developed several initiatives for the community to participate in during the month of October. So, Domestic Violence Awareness Month, October 2020, whereas the community problem of domestic violence has become a critical public health and welfare concern in Anoka County, and whereas domestic violence is a crime, the commission of which will not be tolerated in Anoka County, and perpetrators of said crime are subject to prosecution and conviction in accordance with the law, and whereas over thousands of women, men, and children have and will continue to access assistance from Alexandra House Incorporated, a domestic violence service provider, and whereas domestic violence will be eliminated through community partnerships of concerned individuals and organizations working together to prevent abuse while at the same time affecting social and legal change, and whereas October is National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and whereas during National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, Anoka County organizations will inform area residents about domestic violence, its prevalence, consequences, and what we as a concerned community can do to eliminate its existence. Now, therefore, I, Jerry Cook, Mayor of the City of Coon Rapids, on behalf of the city council and citizens of our city, officially proclaim October to be Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the City of Coon Rapids, proclaimed the 7th day of October 2020. And we'll send that to them, I would imagine. And I noticed they have a big push for lighting up purple. I know several of us have our purple on tonight, but I noticed City Hall, we had lit up purple. Is that for the whole month?
Mayor, council defer to Chief Wise. Can you answer that?
Mr. Mayor, council, yes. It's actually, it's a nationwide program. It's called Purple Lights Program, but it's basically just to elevate awareness for domestic violence and concern for it and trying to address it as best we're able to. So, we just wanted to send a strong visual message to the community that we're paying attention here in Coon Rapids, and we're going to intervene where we can and try to make for a safer city.
Excellent. Well, kudos. It's pretty impressive. All right. Item two on our agenda is to approve the minutes of September 15th, 2020.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Kicker.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of September 15th, 2020 meeting.
Second.
Motion by Kicker, second by Demmer. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And those minutes are approved. We have seven items on this evening's consent agenda, and the first one is item three on this evening's agenda, and that is appointing Ian Undo, maybe? O-U-N-D-O, and I really apologize, Ian, to the Parks and Recreation Commission. Ian submitted an application for the Parks and Recreation Commission in June of 2020 and has been attending meetings since that time. The commission has discussed the application and recommends Ian be appointed to the Parks and Recreation Commission with a term expiring December 31st, 2021. After this appointment, all seven Parks and Recreation Commission's seats will be filled, and the Parks and Recreation Commission meetings are held at Riverwind Community Building during COVID-19 to allow for more space, and they meet the second Monday of each month. So we're looking to adopt Resolution 20-88, appointing Ian Undo, maybe, to the Parks and Recreation Commission with a term expiring December 31st, 2021. The second item on our consent agenda item, or second, second item on our consent agenda, which is item four this evening, is to adopt Resolution 20-87, appointing a Sustainability Commission members. And we're looking to appoint Ian Undo and Thomas Kicker, submitted applications to fill the vacancies on the city's Sustainability Commission. After discussion with the commission and applicants, the Sustainability Commission recommends their appointment to the commission. Mr. Undo's term will expire December 31st, 2022, and Mr. Kicker's term will expire December 31st, 2023. So we're looking to adopt Resolution 20-87, appointing Ian Undo with a term expiring December 31st, 2022, and Thomas Kicker with a term expiring December 31st, 2023, to the Sustainability Commission. Item five on this evening's agenda, which is consent agenda item three, is to adopt Resolution 20-85, certifying delinquent utilities. Provision has been made to accept the utility amount without interest through 4:30 PM November 10th, 2020, and last year at this time, the utility cost total was $1,35,526, and right now we are at, oh, I see, right now we're at $920,640. So we're looking to adopt Resolution 20-85, Resolution Certifying Delinquent Utilities to Taxes. I guess the takeaway from this is, is if you have delinquent utilities that are going to be assessed, you have through 4:30 PM November 10th to pay them without interest and without penalty. But don't wait till 4:30 PM on November 10th. Next item on our agenda then is consent item number, no, that was the one we just did. Consent agenda item number four, which is item six this evening, is to adopt Resolution 20-86, Adopting Post-Ishwance Debt Compliance Policy for Tax Exempt and Tax-Advantaged Governmental Bonds. And bonds issued by state and local governments are generally subject to ongoing monitoring and reporting with respect to compliance with federal tax requirements specifically related to tax-exempt bonds and federal disclosure requirements pursuant to their continuing disclosure agreements. And basically, this just says that we are going to adhere to all of those steps. So we're looking to adopt Resolution 20-86, Post-Ishwance Debt Compliance Policy for Tax- Exempt and Tax-Advantaged Governmental Bonds. Item seven, which is the fifth item on our consent agenda then, is to approve an amended agreement with Joint Law Enforcement Council for Public Safety Data Systems Assistant System Manager. In 2016, the city entered into an agreement with the Joint Law Enforcement Council to house a new Assistant System Manager position to help support it at the new public data safety systems. In the agreement, they agreed to pay the city to host what would be a 32-hour-per-week position, and the remaining eight hours has been funded by the city and its police department time that is filled by meeting the increase in tech needs of the department, including managing digital video systems. In the last four years, the Joint Law Enforcement Council has increasing needs for the Assistant System Manager position, and has now requested that all 40 hours of the position be allocated to the Joint Law Enforcement Council. The city would still host the position at the police department, but the Joint Law Enforcement Council would be responsible for 100% of the position's cost. The proposed amendment to the agreement would memorialize these changes and extend the term of the agreement to January 21st, 2021, and the police department fully supports this proposed amendment. And I like that you added the other little paragraph, because immediately everybody's wondering, so what are we going to do then?
Human resources.
And with the retirement of the police department administrative assistant, her position has been restructured to include the eight hours of job duties that had been handled by the Assistant System Manager, so we'll make a seamless transition, nearly. So we're looking to authorize Amendment One to the agreement for Public Safety Data Systems Assistant System Manager with the Anoka County Joint Law Enforcement Council. And item eight is to approve final payment to Douglas Kerr Underground LLC for Project 19-3, Street Reconstruction. There were some changes for pavement markings, additional dewatering within the Bridgewater neighborhood area, and subgrade corrections on Mississippi Boulevard, and the actual project costs were more than the final contract amount due to quantity adjustments from the original bid. So we're looking to approve the change orders and final payment to Douglas Kerr Underground LLC in the amount of $249,645.02 for Project 19-3, Street Reconstruction. And then item nine, which is the seventh and last item on the consent agenda this evening, is to adopt Resolution 20-90, Accepting a 2020 Grant for a Full-Time DWI Officer. Accepting the grant required the authorized strength of the police department to be raised from 66 to 67 sworn officers, and once the grant funds are discontinued, the authorized strength of the department will return to the number of officers funded in the city budget through retirement or attrition. I guess I should probably cover that. The total length for the DWI officer grant is expected to be one year, beginning October 1st, October 1st, 2020, with a one-year extension possible. The 2021 federal fiscal year ends September 30th, 2021, and the Coon Rapids Police Department has developed a work plan and budget approved by OTS, the Office of Traffic Safety, and the award covers a full-time sworn officer's salary and fringe benefits. The squad car operating costs, uniforms, and weapons are not covered by the grant. So we're looking to approve Resolution 20-90, Authorizing a 2020 Agreement with the Minnesota Office of Traffic Safety, Accepting a Grant to Fund a Full-Time Officer Through September 30th, 2021.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Johnson.
I'll move adoption and approval of the seven items on the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Wells. Any discussion or questions? Councilmember Demmer.
So just a big thanks to Ian and Thomas on the joining the commissions and my typical ask for, hey, are there any other open spots people should know about?
Ms. Lumsman.
Mayor, Councilmember Demmer, yes, there are a handful of spots usually open on the safety and the sustainability and the arts and historicals. So check with the city if you're interested in serving, and we'll get you that information.
All right. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. And we are looking at item 10, which is to hold a public hearing on the proposed, that's a Justice something, Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant. There we go. The Coon Rapids Police Department received notice from the United States Department of Justice that it is eligible for a fiscal year 2020 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, JAG, in the amount of $10,373, and as a law enforcement agency that works in partnership with Anoka County, the grant requires the City of Coon Rapids to enter into an agreement, a memorandum of understanding, with Anoka County to ensure the funds are spent within Coon Rapids for law enforcement purposes. Chief Wise, do you want me to read this discussion point here, or do you want to give us the highlights, or?
No, Mr. Mayor, since this is regarding holding a public hearing, I thought I could just summarize maybe what we're looking for. So, we traditionally get this grant from the U.S. Department of Justice, and generally speaking, it's around $10,000. One of the conditions of the grant is that it be non-supplanting, meaning that it has to be something that's outside of the budget. This grant actually originated as a stimulus-type grant 10 years ago, and it's just been continued since then. So in this case, for this year, we're looking to enhance our defensive tactics gear related to riots, meaning we have something called the Mobile Field Force, which includes helmets and padding for officers to wear in the, to wear in the event of a disturbance. Thankfully, we haven't needed any of that here in the City of Coon Rapids, however, our staff was utilized in the city of Minneapolis from the disturbances that took place back in May. And frankly, we don't see where that will be alleviated anytime soon. I mean, there's this tension in the air. You don't need me to explain that to you. That said, the $10,700 is primarily being spent on seven sets of what we call Mobile Field Force gear, so that'll put seven officers. In addition, we have six other sets of helmets, gas masks, and batons, and the other item would be a, something called the M40 device that delivers gas canisters to disperse crowds, again, which was kind of the go-to tactics for getting people to move in the event of a disturbance, such like we saw earlier this year. Frankly, it saddens me that I'm asking you for this stuff, to be honest. I wish I didn't need to, but unfortunately, I do.
Well, and you're not actually asking us for the money, so that's nice.
Yes, there is that. But I'm asking, I'm asking actually the public to weigh in, because I can see where somebody would have a reasonable concern about that sort of gear, and I guess you know, based on what had happened back in May, is that our police department was very judicious about when we put our officers in harm's way for riots, and we will only ever send our officers in an occasion where they're being set up for success, not being set up for failure. And that's the, that's the decision-making model I use for when those officers are deployed.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions of Chief Wise before we open up for a public hearing?
Hi, Your Honor.
Councilmember Demmer.
So I think one thing would be just if you want to talk a little bit about how you handle training for that stuff, you know, as far as a public hearing goes, I think people would want to know how training's going to work and accountability for things. I mean, I, I can imagine, you know, to your point, if someone was here for a public hearing, that they're thinking about stuff they've seen on Twitter and want to make sure our police officers don't end up on someone's Twitter feed.
Yep. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity, Councilmember Demmer. Yeah, command and control of a unit like that is exceedingly important. If you're inserting police officers into chaos, the thing they have to be more than anything is under control and very deliberate in what they do. We're not, we don't insert officers to create more chaos. We insert officers to reduce the chaos. So our officers in particular are only ever deployed under Coon Rapids management. We never, while we may fall under the umbrella of some unified command and emergency management leadership structure, the actions of our officers will always be under the control of a Coon Rapids command staff person, whether it be a sergeant or a captain, most likely a captain. We had Captain John Stanky went down to Minneapolis with our unit every time they were deployed, and every time they were asked to do anything, it was with his consent that they were given a mission. Again, I think you saw a lot of that, you know, again, just a flashback, is that the National Guard, for instance, operated under the idea that they wanted clear leadership, they wanted a clear mission, and they wanted their missions to be achievable, and frankly, that's the model that we want to abide by. So, no, the officers are never freelancing, they're never under somebody else's leadership, and, and we take that mission very seriously, and like I said, we're very judicious in how our officers are deployed in such a circumstance.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
So, you know, I, Chief Wise, you and I have had a lot of conversations, and I really appreciate, you know, the transparency and really the culture with our police department is different than what we see a lot of times portrayed in news at other areas. And correct me if this is the right way to play what this grant would be for. It's materials that will help protect our officers. It's not that we are looking to go and say, hey, now we've got this, let's go out and wear it and be a militant police force. It's to be used, it's in our safety gear to protect those should the event ever happen. It's not that we are intending to use that. Is that correct?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Geisler. That's exactly right. The idea is we don't want any of our officers to be injured when they're inserted into a moment like that, because if they're injured, not only does the injured officer come off the line, officers that have to attend to the injured officer come off the line, and it just makes sense. They're ordinary men and women that are asked to do an extraordinary job, and they need to be protected while they're doing it, and a lot of the things that they were dealing with back in May were things like frozen water bottles being thrown at them, and/or rocks, bricks, those sorts of things. And a helmet and padded gear makes all the difference when dealing with that sort of violence.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Any other questions before we open up the public hearing? Mayor? Councilmember Griscoviac?
You outline this pretty well, but these grant funds, this is all, this is all be used for non-lethal technical gear, right? Tactical gear, all non-lethal.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Griscoviac. Yes, it is non-lethal. It is less-than-deadly force. It is defensive in nature and crowd-control designed, and so, no, we're not trying to escalate, that's for sure. Our focus is always on de-escalating, and sometimes de-escalating means dispersing a crowd, and so we just want to make sure our officers are prepared to do that in the event that they're needed. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. One of the things that I would really recommend to Coon Rapids residents, if this comes up again, is if you, if, once we get past COVID and we have the Coon Rapids Police Academy, that was so eye-opening. Oh, my gosh, that was just so amazing to go through and see the, the.
Escalation?
The de-escalation. I wanted to get that going in the right direction. And just all of the training and just, and really just getting to know the officers as well, it really was good. It was 10 weeks, I think, wasn't it?
Yeah, 10 weeks.
Councilmember Kicker and I went through it together.
Yeah. It was really good.
Yeah, very good. So hopefully, we'll be able to restart that once we get past, you know, everything else. Okay. Took us completely off topic, but if there's no other questions, I'll open up a public hearing. All right. So, on the grant application for the United States Department of Justice, we've opened the public hearing. Is anybody here to address counsel on the grant? Anybody here to address counsel on the grant application for the United States Department of Justice? Public hearing, seeing, hearing none. We'll close the public hearing, and.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Johnson.
I'd move approval of entering into a memorandum of understanding with Anoka County and the, on the grant from the U.S. Department of Justice.
Second. Motion by Johnson, was it a second by Kicker? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Wells.
If I could ask the question of Chief Wise, I'm reminded of it. In regards to going to Minneapolis, do we have a bill that we submitted? And what is that amount? And I know the chances of getting reimbursed, but I'm just curious about the amount.
I was going to ask that off the record.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Wells and council. Let's see. I probably, I feel like I should be blunt. We're getting stuck with a $44,000 tab so far. The way that came to be is that when the riots first broke out, Minneapolis requested what's called mutual aid. There's a mutual aid compact in the state of Minnesota, and basically, while you don't have an absolute responsibility to respond, it's kind of an ethical responsibility that when Minneapolis calls asking for help, you go help. The return of that is, there is something in state statute where the helper, meaning Coon Rapids, by statute is allowed to send a bill to the, to the person requesting help, and that the person requesting help is obligated to pay that bill. The circumstance so far is that we have yet to see a check from the city of Minneapolis. And frankly, it complicates things for the future. The state of Minnesota has been inquired about to step into this role too. It's a bit of a mess, and it would be good of our, either the elected officials in Minneapolis and/or in their absence, state officials, to make the City of Coon Rapids whole, because it's not a, it's a burden that Coon Rapids taxpayers shouldn't have to bear, to be blunt. So frankly, it left a bad taste in my mouth, especially if something like this should, should come up again, and you don't want that dynamic to exist in the universe where suburbs won't help a city because the city leaves the suburbs hanging. However, if you read the news, places like Portland and Seattle are regularly leaving the suburbs out to hang, and the suburbs now have stopped responding. So there's a lot to think about in all this moving forward, but Minneapolis needs to get their act together and figure out what they're going to do, because I'm not going to just have the Coon Rapids citizens pay the bill for the safety and security of Minneapolis. That's not right.
Your Honor.
Excellent. Councilmember Johnson?
Chief, we've talked about this in the past, and it's even been talked about at the Joint Law Enforcement Council meeting before. We're not the only suburb that got stuck with kind of holding the tab on some of this. Do you think it might be helpful for the city to communicate in a formal way, the city council here, to communicate in a formal way with the city council in Minneapolis? I mean, I don't want you to be the one to, I don't want you to be the one to just necessarily be kind of, you know, beating down the door and having to ask for this on your own. I mean, I want you to know that you have the support, the full support, I'm sure, of the city council here, and some of us would put our names on pieces of paper to at least make a clear record that we think we should be reimbursed for that.
Yeah, Councilmember Johnson, Mr. Mayor, yeah, I mean, that feels like a question above my pay grade, but that said, whatever increases the likelihood of our taxpayer being reimbursed, I'm all in favor.
Well, let's maybe get it on a workshop, and we can just figure out exactly what we want to do on it. Thank you.
One thing nice to know is we don't have any levels above your pay grade, so.
Right.
All right. Thank you for all the conversation, and all right. Onto item 11 under new business. Consider Resolution 20-89, Awarding the Sale of $7,215,000 in General Obligation Bonds, Series 2020A. Hanson?
Mr. Mayor, yes, the sale did go through today. Mr. Nick Anhout from Ellers is here to present the results of that sale.
I hear tell you have excellent news for us.
Yeah, Nick, you've always come with good news. So, one of these days.
Always stack the deck, Mayor. Always stack.
Yes, I do have very good news. Mayor, council, Nick Anhout from Ellers and Associates, we're financial advisors to the city of Coon Rapids, and I am happy. the city of Coon Rapids, and I am happy to be before you for two reasons. One, kudos to affirming the city's AA1 credit rating, which is a very strong credit rating, the second highest that Moody's does afford. That evaluation helped deliver the results that I'm gonna present to you this evening. We did receive four bids on behalf of the city this morning to purchase $7.2 million worth of bonds to finance the city's street reconstruction program for this year, as well as the acquisition of a fire truck. The low bid came from Piper Sandler and Company, a firm out here on Minneapolis, investment banking firm, with a low bid of .88% on these bonds. These are bonds that will be repaid over the course of just over 10 years at .88%, which is a fantastic rate and in line with the market where we're at today, a very low, perhaps all-time low, as far as tax-exempt yields on bonds. The high bid came in at 1.07%, which is not so bad on its own, but, you know, certainly we'll go with the .88%. The difference between the two was about $112,000 worth of cumulative interest costs over that full 10-year period of the repayment. With the bid from Piper Sandler, they did include just under $300,000 of re-offering premium, so they will re-offer these bonds to the public marketplace, individual investors. And as part of that, they'll mark them up slightly, and they pay you that proceeds as part of the funding for the projects. With that premium, we were over-subscribed, if you will, for the amount that we needed for the project, so we're able to actually lower your borrowing amount to match it up. So the final resolution before you calls for $6,890,000 of principal to provide the funding for your projects. So a break-even result as far as what you need for your projects, but you'll be paying down a lower amount over that 10-year term. The total amount of net principal and interest on these bonds, at the end of the day, after 10 years, would be just over $7.5 million at .88%. All that said, the resolution that has been prepared from your bond attorney has been updated to reflect the low bid from Piper Sandler. I am standing by to answer any of the council's questions, but this is definitely a very positive result. It is in line with the marketplace. It's about $50,000 less than our estimates that we put together for you about a month ago, and we certainly recommend that you do adopt that resolution and move ahead with the proposal from Piper Sandler. So congratulations, and stand for any questions. Thank you.
Excellent. Anybody have any questions? Councilmember Decker?
More of a comment. You know, we always ask you guys, like, what's gonna happen if we do these bonds? Is our rating gonna go down? And so, really, it was a lot of fun to see you preemptively put in a credit opinion in here so we could read the whole thing and not have to ask you that question, so I just wanted to thank you for that. It's like getting the answer guide from the teacher before the test. Maybe not the most exciting reading ever, but a very exciting result, so thank you for giving us that. If anyone ever wants to read it, it really shows you exactly where your city sits and how the credit rating groups look at it and what your strengths and weaknesses are. And it helps us understand what flexibility we have, so, again, thanks for coming with that.
Pleasure.
Stacking the deck again.
All right. Any other questions? Well, he did give us a recommendation.
Your Honor?
Councilmember Decker?
Before I read it, should I use the 6890 number or the 7215 number?
6890.
All right. Move resolution 20-89 awarding the sale of $6,890,000 of general obligation improvement equipment and utility bonds, Series 2020A, fixing their form and specifications, directing their execution and delivery, and providing for their payment.
Second? Motion by Decker, second by Geisler. Discussion?
I guess, Mr. Mayor.
We're gonna expect even better news next time you come back. You know that, right?
Yeah, .88.
Councilmember Geisler?
Yeah, and to me, you know, thank you to Ellers, but I'd also like to thank our finance staff, because they are really, really good at managing the budgets in the city and understanding when is the right time to do bonding, when is the right time to be using, you know, levy dollars or other revenue fund dollars. And that AA1 credit rating is really, really good. I don't think we want to try and get to the next level, but being able to balance and do the money management for our city to keep us at that level means that we can borrow at a much better rate. So it's like your credit score at home, right? And the better you do at managing, the better your credit score is, the better you can borrow money. And so I thank you to our finance staff for being diligent. I appreciate it.
All right, excellent. We have a motion and a second, correct?
Yes.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And that motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 12 on this evening's agenda is to consider a development agreement with 211 CRW LLC for Northdale Traffic Signal and Intersection Improvements 19-28. The proposed development agreement is for the intersection improvement project to be done in conjunction with the redevelopment of 3211 Northdale Boulevard, the current Famous Dave's location. I think that's already passed, hence now. Yeah.
They were literally destroying it today.
Yeah. The proposed redevelopment project will include a multi-tenant commercial building and a bank, which will increase traffic in the area. Existing traffic concerns near this location required the completion of a traffic analysis during the development approval process. The results of that traffic analysis recommended the installation of a new traffic signal, which reinforced a previous city traffic study done for the Riverdale shopping area. Proposed improvements include the construction of a traffic signal and ancillary pedestrian and median enhancements on Northdale Boulevard north of Main Street, as well as construction of a three-quarter access at the Costco entrance. The attached development agreement requires a 25% cost contribution by the developer, outlines the city and developer cost participation, construction design and administration, and ongoing maintenance activities. Other adjacent benefiting properties have already agreed to and executed waivers of assessment for 25% of the project costs, and the city will fund 50%. Does anybody have any questions or need the dog and pony show on this, or...
I have a question.
Councilmember Decker?
I don't know, maybe I've just missed this in the past, but I see it twice on here where there's a company LLC, where the company name looks awfully specific to this project, right? So we've got the 211 CRW LLC, and then on item 15, we've got 9534 Foley LLC. And I guess maybe that's how it's always been done? Not sure if I just haven't caught it before, but it sort of looks like these, you know, we're paying a company that exists for one project and one project only, and I thought usually we had situations where we wanted companies that had a track record. So I was just sort of curious if there was any input on that, or if this is a, if there's a reason why it's okay in this situation to have a company that doesn't have a track record versus other bids where we seem to get companies that have been around for a long time and we can vouch for their work.
Mr. Hammer, you want to clarify that?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Decker, I guess I can defer to Mr. Brody, but I'll clarify, this is not a bid. This is an agreement where they're paying a portion of a contract. The next three items really are all related to the traffic signal. This is just a development agreement memorializing they're gonna contribute 25% to the project. I believe the language states that as soon as we award bid, we invoice them for 95% upfront, and then we collect the final 5% upon project completion. So within, if you approve item 13, tomorrow we can send them an invoice for that dollar amount. They still haven't pulled their building permits. I mean, so there is something behind to at least get 95%. Mr. Brody can maybe speak to the other part of the LLCs.
No, I guess that makes sense. I was thinking it involved the bidding process, but I think I understand better. It's that we need to have a partner, so they had to make a name for their partnership. Is that the 10,000-foot summary?
That's correct, and we've been waiting for this final piece to do everything else on the list.
Thank you for the clarification. Sorry, it was a dumb question.
No problem.
Okay, Councilmember Kicker, Bruscovia?
Just a question on the development agreement itself. It has an estimated cost, total cost of the project at $430,000. Is that, is that accurate? Or it seems like our engineer's estimate was much lower than that, and I understand they're paying for 25% of that cost, but...
Yes, Councilmember Bruscovia, what I had applied there was the 50% of the estimate, because that was done, but I mean, we're within $5,000, $10,000 what the engineer's estimate was. I have actual proposals for the material testing and the construction administration piece, so they are going to pay 25% of that. It's actual cost. So I just took the numbers and did the 25% calculation and added it up. So when we look at the total contract that will be awarded, that is only a piece of it. And you also add in the admin. It doesn't really include our staff time to prepare the plans, but again, material testing, inspections, construction staking, those sort of things.
Got it all covered. Thanks.
All right. So... Your Honor? Councilmember Kicker?
I'll make a motion that the council approve the development agreement with 211 CRW LLC for traffic signal and intersection improvements related to the redevelopment of 3211 Northdale Boulevard.
Second? Motion by Kicker, second by Bruscovia. Discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And that motion carries. And the next item, item 13, is to consider awarding the contract for the Northdale Boulevard traffic signal and intersection improvements. And the intersection improvement project proposed in conjunction with the redevelopment of 3211 Northdale Boulevard, the proposed development will increase traffic in the area and existing traffic concerns near this location. It necessitated the completion of a traffic analysis. We already kind of went through all this. The advertisement for bids was published on August 7th and 14th, and the bids were received August 28th. The engineer's estimate for this work was $291,030. Based on the bids received, staff recommends awarding a contract to Forest Lake Contracting. Forest Lake has successfully performed several projects for the city in the past. If approved, it is anticipated the median modifications, ADA pedestrian curb ramp construction, concrete signal bases, and conduits would be constructed yet this fall. Once the new signal poles are fabricated, they will be installed over the late winter or spring months of 2021. Final turf and site restoration will take place during spring of 2021. A condition for the redevelopment project outlined in agreement with language requiring cost participation for the construction of the new traffic signal, which is presented on other agenda items this evening. Other adjacent benefiting properties have already agreed to and executed waivers of assessment for 25% of the project costs, and the city will be funding 50%. A joint powers agreement with Anoka County detailing ongoing maintenance of the new signal and EVP system will also be presented for council consideration on a separate agenda item. And then I thought worth mentioning is, the city will be responsible for half the cost of this project, with the other half being assessed or invoiced to the adjacent benefiting property owners. A development agreement outlining a 25% contribution from the Famous Dave's site developer will be presented to the city council in a separate agenda item, but the city's portion of the project costs will be funded from the Riverdale Area Fund. So, anybody have any questions of Mr. Hammer? Anything you want to cover, Mr. Hammer, that you didn't put into your very comprehensive description there?
No, Mr. Mayor, nothing to add unless there are any questions.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution 19-28 sub 9, awarding a contract to Forest Lake Contracting in the amount of $285,365.90 for Northdale Boulevard traffic signal and intersection improvements.
Second? Motion by Geisler, second by Kicker. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And that motion carries. That engineer's estimate was pretty dang close.
Yes, it was. Good bids, good contractors.
We are on to item 14. Uh-oh. There we go. Consider a joint powers agreement with Anoka County for Northdale Traffic Signal Maintenance, 19-28. In conjunction with that redevelopment we've been talking about here, the city plans to construct a new traffic signal and ancillary pedestrian and median enhancements. The attached joint powers agreement outlines ongoing signal and EVP system maintenance and inspection requirements by the city and Anoka County. And as with other traffic signals in the city, the majority of maintenance will be performed by the county and billed quarterly to the city. The city will be responsible for maintaining the galvanized coating on the traffic signal poles, which sounds a lot cheaper than blue paint. And for ongoing maintenance of the overhead streetlight luminaires. This joint powers agreement was approved by Anoka County's Transportation Committee at its meeting held August 17th, and by the county board on August 25th, and the county will execute the joint powers agreement upon city council approval. Anything you want to add, Mr. Hammer? Anybody have any questions?
No, Mr. Mayor.
No, just a question.
Okay, Councilmember Johnson?
When do we think that project's gonna be done? I know they're working on it right now.
Yes, the main holdup, Councilmember Johnson, will be the fabrication of the signals themselves. We anticipate delivery in February or March, so we're hoping to have this signal operational by, say, mid-March.
Roads will be done before then, but the signal will be installed later?
That's correct. We've already had the pre-construction meeting. Now it's sign it, send in your bonds and insurance, and they're ready to go with a very aggressive schedule. It shouldn't take long, it's a small area, but all the surface improvements should be completed within probably six weeks.
Perfect, thank you.
And that three-quarter median coming out of Costco will be high enough, people won't be making a left over the top of it?
I cannot guarantee that, Mr. Mayor, of other people decide to drive over a median. Maybe Chief Wise can make sure that that doesn't occur, since we're throwing each other under the bus tonight.
I follow cars out of 108th Lane all the time on the new intersection by the Hanson Bridge, and you're not supposed to make a left there. You're supposed to go down, make a U-turn, and come back up. And I can't tell you how many cars that come up behind, and they just make that little scoop and make that left and shoot over the bridge, and it's like, oh, okay, all right. All right, so, somebody want to... Your Honor? Councilmember Kicker?
I make a motion that the council approve the execution of the joint powers agreement with the Anoka County, or with Anoka County for maintenance of the proposed Northdale Boulevard traffic signal and EVP system to be located north of Main Street.
Second? Motion by Kicker, second by Geisler. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bruscovia?
Just a clarification, how do we maintain the EVP system? Isn't that entirely Anoka County?
Councilmember Bruscovia, council, the EVP is for the benefit of our emergency responders, so our police and fire. So that's in every JPA out there. There's very little emergency response we get from Anoka County, so therefore, we're responsible to make sure those are functioning properly.
Thank you.
You've never been fortunate enough to follow the fire chief around when he's triggering those, stuck at every light while he's testing them. Mr. Stemwell?
Mayor, council, just gonna add to that, yes, that Fire Department, primary of the chief does audit, drives through the city every so often, makes sure those signals are working, and when they're not, he is in contact with the Anoka Highway Department if it's, assuming it's their signal, and they'll do the replacement. We have to pay for it, but, yeah, it works, you know, and typically, he doesn't find very many that are not functioning, which is the good news, especially now we've replaced some of the systems that were habitually having a problem, and now they're much better.
All right. And then, yeah, the clarification is, for anybody that's watching this wondering, it's that strobe that signals who's got control of the intersection. And if you are approaching the intersection and the light is solid, that means the emergency vehicle is either in front of you or behind you, because that's the side that has control of the intersection. And if it's flashing, that means somebody else has control of the intersection. Yes?
I think, well, you better ask him.
Mayor, council, that's correct.
I don't want to misstate that. I don't want to misstate that.
Learned a lot following the, following the chief that day, stuck at those lights. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. And now we are on to Councilmember Demmer's other Foley LLC project. Item fifteen, consider agreements with ninety-five, thirty-four Foley LLC related to project eighteen dash twenty-seven, Foley Boulevard grade separation. Mr. Hammer, do you want to hit this, or do you want me to read your discussion?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, I can give you a brief summary. This is the owner of the former Berry Plastics site. In order to accomplish the construction of that Foley Boulevard overpass, there's a baggage road plan, there'll be a right turn lane coming off Coon Rapids Boulevard through there. Anoka County was negotiating for land acquisitions for that. The property owner looks to, wants to expand and redevelop. So the idea was, they dedicate to us the, the land at no cost. In exchange for that, we split fifty-fifty with Anoka County the cost of the roadway. The developer pays a hundred percent of the cost of the utility extensions to be assessed. So the first item is the easement document giving the right of way to construct the road. The second piece is the assessment agreement whereby they agree to pay the full costs, actual costs of the utility extensions, and those would be assessed over twenty years. And then the final piece is just a development agreement, which kind of ties all of these little strings together to allow the county to move forward and the project to happen and the developer to be satisfied with what their needs will be into the future. And I'm happy to answer any questions beyond that.
All right, any questions, Mr. Hammer? Nope. And judging by the little map, we still have a street and utilities connecting in between. We're not, I suppose we have to take that offline. We're not, take that all back. All right, somebody want to move this?
Your Honor?
Councilmember Kicker?
I'll make a motion that the council approves the following agreement with nine-five-three-four Foley LLC related to the construction of a new city street from Coon Rapids Boulevard to Foley Boulevard as part of the Foley Boulevard railroad grade separation project. Three items are easement agreement, assessment agreement, and waiver, and agreement with nine-five-three-four Foley LLC.
Second.
Motion by Kicker, second by Geisler. Discussion? That's really going to change that area, having that extra street off Coon Rapids Boulevard there. Really interesting. All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Item sixteen is to consider a joint powers agreement with Anoka County for the construction of the Foley Boulevard railroad grade separation, city project eighteen dash twenty-seven. Boy, this has been a long time coming.
Mr. Mayor, when I first started eight years ago, there were ninety-five percent construction plans for this project at that time. And the design has changed considerably. It's opened up some other opportunities, not only with the developer on the last one, six-ten. It, it gives us a little more flexibility in, in another railroad crossing. So yes, it, it's been a long time coming. If, if I may, Mr. Mayor, council, we've talked about this in work session. It's about a twenty-three million dollar project. There's about eleven million dollars in federal funds going towards it. The city's portion of it is approximately two million dollars. I mean, it's really, we're at ninety percent construction drawings now. And the breakdowns are, are shown here on the map. The biggest one is the water fund, and not only are we front-ending the cost for the developer, but we also have some old concrete-lined water main out on East River Road. These are some of our larger trunk mains. This is an area where I'm still hopeful to find that water tower, and I'll, I'll take that one offline, too. But the biggest hit here is to the water fund. The rest of it is kind of straightforward for you. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. I, I think we've worked long and hard to get us where we are today. I think we've got a good project. I'll say reasonably priced, because nothing's ever cheap when you're talking about millions, but I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Your Honor?
All right, Councilmember Johnson?
I just really have two questions that relate to this, and one is the, the timing and duration of the project. So I understand that if it gets approved and we move forward, we're looking at breaking ground in spring of 2021, is I understand it. Will it go through that winter? Is this a two-year project?
Councilmember Johnson, yes, it will. And, and they are probably starting to talk about removing trees and other site-clearing activities here this fall still, outside of the contract. The county force is doing that. But it will be a two-year, maybe a year and a half. I, I don't want to make any more promises with railroad grade separations and anything. But the good news on this one is you can build, because of the alignment shift, is you can build the bridge over the railroad tracks and leave the current alignment as it exists. So Foley will function as it is while that bridge is done, and then you're able to shift the traffic over and change things. So the, the traffic disruption should be more minimal compared to what you would encounter because of that shift. But I'm not going to overpromise anything this time. I'm hoping to under-deliver, over-deliver by...
Underpromise, overdeliver.
There you go.
Yes, that's right. That's what I'm trying to do. But yes, we're, we're anticipating two full years.
So obviously, my, my concern stems from the old Foley project, that we all kind of suffered through the winter on and everything. And what I'm hearing you say is that the concerns that arose during that period of time and some of the unexpected things about road condition are really not that likely to occur here, because we're going to be able to keep our current alignment and, and utilize the road that exists right now. So we're not going to be dealing with a dirt road on Foley over a winter.
Yeah, the only thing that is going to be the same in its current condition is from the entrance to the parking right facility to Coon Rapids Boulevard. Everything west is going to be built offline, and that will be part of the phase-one construction. So existing Foley will continue to function as it is. There will be some challenges as you do that switch over and getting the buses in, certainly.
Sure.
But I'm not anticipating, nor does the county want to repeat, minimal maintenance road, any of that sort of thing. They've learned their lessons.
Yeah, well, I, I hope so. So then I don't have any concerns about entering into the joint powers agreement without any preconditions on that. But there is one other component that I want to make sure is, remains a part of the plan, and that is a surmountable median for the businesses that are along Foley there, because there was some concern about access to them as we're doing this road improvement.
That's still in, Councilmember Johnson, that will continue to remain. That's the agreement we came to.
Perfect.
It, it, it's a good solution. We'll have to potentially revisit if six-ten ever comes along and changes kind of the dynamics of the flow in there. But with this project, yes, it will have a, a lower median such that you can drive over it.
Perfect, then I'm happy to support this. Thank you.
Surmountable.
Yeah.
All right. Your Honor? Councilmember Demmer?
Another one where I just apparently don't remember things right, but I didn't remember the changes that are over by Ace and Culvers on that side of Coon Rapids Boulevard. It looks like we're moving into the parking lot a little bit and adding a second turn lane, left turn lane. Is that, is that what's going on way over there?
Councilmember Demmer, council, yes, there is some widening that's occurring on that side. We've been working with the county. I'll say nothing has changed in that regard since the very beginning of the project. You're just trying to get the alignment to match up. There's currently a dual left in, in that configuration. No?
It, it seems like there's an extra lane in here compared to what's in here right now. I, I was, I was trying to figure out what was going on there, because, but I'll tell you that it's a huge file and it loads really slowly, so every time I try to look at it, like, I can't quite tell what I'm looking at. So I, I was just trying to remember what was happening over there, and I'm assuming it's all necessary, or we wouldn't do it, but it, it just, it's so far away from the bridge that I was making sure all those businesses over there are, are okay with that, because their parking lots up against that edge, and moving into their parking lot could be tough for them to then have parking.
Yeah, there have been discussions with the Townhome Association and the, the little business there, as well as the hardware store. They're looking at doing some lot configurations and something with their entrances. But it, it opens up that intersection, gives the free-flow right turn, dual lefts, and two-through lanes. And as I said, this had been on the docket since the very beginning. Nothing has changed in that regard for this segment. It's just trying to get that one lane each direction coming out of the residential section into more of this higher-volume segment. You're, you're transitioning out of two lanes with a, a center turn lane to two lanes each direction, and you want to make sure you have good free turn lanes on the Coon Rapids Boulevard.
I think I've always just looked really close at all the crazy stuff going on on the west side, because that's where a lot of the six-ten exchange, you know, all, all the interesting stuff was happening, and so I wasn't, wasn't looking at the east. But, okay, just wanted to, to make sure that we had started talking to those guys about their parking lot. I just, I didn't want to get into a weird situation there with them.
All right. Any other questions of Mr. Hammer? Somebody want to move this?
Your Honor?
Councilmember Kicker?
I'll make a motion that the council approve the executive, or the execution of a joint powers agreement with Anoka County for construction of grade separation project on Foley Boulevard at the BNSF railroad, railway crossing.
I'll second it.
Motion by Kicker, second by Johnson. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor, can I just add one more thing?
Mr. Hammer?
If, if you look at the layout, there is a pond that's shown, I guess it was that southeast quadrant. That's the land that the city purchased some time ago for the interchange. We are giving up a portion of that piece of property to do this ponding, which can be expanded. In exchange for that, we'll be allowed a right-in, right-out onto Coon Rapids Boulevard for any of the property that's there, and we can reconfigure that in a different way. So that ponding will be taking some of that land, but it can be expanded with whatever happens there to help with that stormwater element, and we get access to Coon Rapids Boulevard in exchange.
Good.
Ooh, right-in, right-out there will make that a pretty valuable piece of property. Nice. All right, we have a motion and a second, and if there's no more discussion from Mr. Hammer, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Item seventeen is to consider a driveway agreement with Coffey Holdings LLC. July seventh, the city's Housing and Redevelopment Authority approved a purchase agreement for HRA-owned land at the southwest corner of Egrit and Coon Rapids Boulevard for construction of a small-format Caribou Coffee cabin. At its August twenty meeting, the Planning Commission approved a site plan for the project, and the council subsequently approved a plat and request for site plan flexibility on September first. Closing occurred on September twenty-fifth, and the building permit applications are in process. The developer hopes to construct the building by the end of the year. For traffic safety reasons, a portion of the site's driveway will extend onto city-owned land immediately to the west. This configuration ensures proper spacing between the driveway's intersection with the service road and its intersection with Egrit Boulevard. Therefore, the council is asked to consider an agreement to allow construction and maintenance of the driveway and associated landscaping on city-owned property. Is there anything else you want to present on that, or?
So, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
It, it makes sense with the, the placement, and I think this was actually talked about at the Planning Commission meeting, that, that we may need this. So I will make a motion to approve the driveway agreement with Coffey Holdings LLC.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Demmer.
All of us, we all second it.
Yeah, there were several.
Your Honor, I have a question on this. Is there a reason why, I mean, the way we're phrasing it, it sounds like we're continuing to own the land and they have a driveway on it. Is there a reason we don't just have them buy that little portion of property?
Mr. Fresnelius?
Yeah, the same. Yeah, it seems like a reasonable thing.
Mayor and council, Councilmember Demmer, so we still have an access road. The, the Coon Rapids Boulevard service drive is still there, so we need to be able to use it for public purposes. And in fact, I was having a conversation with city attorney Brody this afternoon about why a license agreement versus, let's say, an easement. So we can't, it's still public property that's needed for public purposes, and so we're using a license, license agreement, which gives them a non-exclusive right to use it, essentially. So we, we can't sell it to them. We still need it for public purpose.
And then the other one that we talked about was, and, and I've had a couple people call and ask me about, is the Coon Rapids Dam sign that is at that corner and that has to stay there.
Yes.
Just curious where in all the agreement process that fact that that sign will stay there forever, or however long it's supposed to stay there, is?
So, Councilmember, that's a good question. When that sign was constructed, and I don't remember off the top of my head, but we did do some research when this project was going through the approval process with the Planning Commission. So when that sign was constructed, the city and the county, I believe, entered into an agreement. So there is an agreement that grants the county the right to have the sign there. And so that'll be, essentially that agreement remains in place going forward.
Right, but it's, it's, the part that I wasn't clear about was Coffey Holdings is buying this plot of land, but they're not allowed to take that sign down, even though that sign is on their land.
Correct.
Is that in a contract somewhere with them that they can't take that sign down?
From the property records, right?
Yeah, I, I, I don't have the purchase agreement in front of me, but yes, I mean, that was, that was disclosed as part of, and discussed as part of the transaction.
Okay, just wanted to be able to answer that question if I get it again.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Fresnelius. We're very close. Mr. Brody was just starting to pull on his mask. He thought he was going to have to step in there. All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. And item eighteen is to consider appointment of election judges, approve salaries, and set the canvass date for the general election. And I talked to Ms. Lenzmeyer this afternoon, and man, that is an impressive list of judges. There's like two-hundred-and-seventy-five judges or something.
Mr. Mayor, that's correct. We're staffed up and ready to go.
All right. Minnesota state statute requires that election judges be appointed by the city council at least twenty-five days prior to the election. Attached is a list of election judges by precinct. Staff is requesting that council authorize the city clerk to make appointments and substitutions as deemed necessary during the twenty-five days prior to the election. And election law, election law allows for emergency appointments on election day should the need arise. Staff is proposing that the election judge hourly salary remain at eleven dollars per hour, with the assistant head judge at thirteen dollars per hour and the head judge at fifteen dollars per hour. Student judges would be paid eleven dollars per hour. And state law requires that the city council meet to canvass the returns and declare the results of the general election. So we're looking to set a special meeting to canvass the election results for Friday, November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty, at seven-thirty a.m. The meeting will be, will be brief, and at least four council members must attend. So...
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
So I will move the appointment of election judges as outlined on our attached list. Authorize city clerk to appoint and assign election judges during the twenty-five days preceding the election if substitutions are necessary. Approved the hourly salary for election judges, eleven dollars per hour. Assistant head judges at thirteen dollars per hour, head judges at fifteen dollars per hour, and student judges at eleven dollars per hour. And to call for the special meeting to canvass the results of the general election for Friday, November thirteenth, at seven-thirty a.m.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Kicker. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
Looking through the list, I'm thrilled. The, there are so many people who are stepping up and just learning the process and being part of it. I was an election judge for fifteen, sixteen, a long time. And just learning how it all works and how safe it is and the, the diligence is really important, part of, being part of that political process. And I loved the fact that I'm now seeing student judges again. That, to me, is really important. I hadn't seen them for several years, so. And I loved the fact that I'm now seeing student judges again. That, to me, is really important. I hadn't seen them for several years, so.
Ms. Lenzmeyer?
Mr. Mayor, councilmember Geisler, thanks for pointing out the students. I am still hiring students. I'm working with the school. I have 26, which is a project I've been working on since I came here, so I'm feeling very excited about that. If any students are interested in working, you need to be 16 years old. Give me a call and we'll set you up.
Excellent. All right, well, nice job. Nice job. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that motion carries. And we are on to item 19, to consider the guidelines for the Coon Rapids Nonprofit Relief Grant Program. Mr. Frenelius, you want to run through this, or is there, Mr. Stemwaddle?
Mayor, council, I can hit the highlights.
All right.
So early this summer, the city was provided 4.8 million dollars, ultimately coming from the federal government through the CARES Act. It was distributed to municipalities across the state under some additional state guidelines, primarily for the purpose of assisting municipalities with paying for some expenses related to COVID-19 and paying for public safety costs and things of that nature. However, it also allowed cities to create programs that would benefit businesses and nonprofits within their community who also had COVID-19-related expenses. So things like protective equipment, payroll costs associated with kind of reorienting their staff towards COVID mitigation, things of that nature. So out of the chute, we focused on the business grant program, knowing that that would be the larger volume and probably the most significant need in terms of assisting our community. And perhaps during other business, we can provide some update on that as well. Secondarily, what staff is proposing here is a nonprofit program that more or less follows the structure of the Inoka County nonprofit program, which would allow nonprofits who are eligible to receive a grant up to $15,000 for eligible expenses. And there are a number of finer points related to what are eligible and who is eligible for that grant. But the short version is if you're a nonprofit operating in Coon Rapids and you're not driving your primary expenses through gambling or adult entertainment or things of that nature, you are likely eligible. And certainly, if you have questions about that, you could call City Hall and find out. We are going to open, assuming council approves this program, we would open the application period beginning October 9th, and it will close on October 19th. We'd anticipate we'd be able to cut the checks for the program sometime in early November. It's hard to pinpoint exactly how many applications we would get in, but based on the response that Inoka County saw for their both business grant program and nonprofit program, reasonably, we could expect somewhere between 20 to 30, 35 applications. But it'll really depend on those who have eligible expenses and certainly getting the word out to them, which will be the major push we'll have into this week and early next week to make sure people are aware of it. I think that covers the highlights. I will mention that the attachment that is provided is accurate in terms of what was being proposed. There was a small error related to ineligible or ineligible organizations on the memo itself. Apparently, I don't know how to copy and paste correctly from one to the next. I missed a word. But it was the intent that those who primarily derive revenue from gambling proceeds not be eligible, which it does not say that in the memo, but it does in the attached guidelines.
Your Honor?
Councilmember Demmer?
Before we make a motion on this, you know, a couple of things. I think it's an excellent, an excellent thing to do. We've been given this money for this purpose. We've done the business program first. That's going well. And the nonprofits are important and are a group, set of groups that are eligible to receive the money. So fully in support. We had a work session where we were trying to iron out the details. And in that work session, we had suggested a change to the first bullet of the eligibility criteria. So I figured I would just read that, get everyone's head nodding, and then we can make a motion if that's what everyone wanted, which is the first sentence of the first bullet that says the applicant must be locally owned, operated, and domiciled in the state of Minnesota with a physical establishment in the city of Coon Rapids. That we were going to change that sentence to applicant must be locally owned, operated, and domiciled in the city of Coon Rapids, Minnesota. So it would, it would remove the necessity for a physical establishment for eligibility criteria. We'd still have, you know, our normal process in place. So that was something that was discussed, and I just wanted to see if I got that part right.
Mr. Stemwaddle, we still want them to be, like, the main part of their business to be in Coon Rapids, though, correct?
Well, mayor, council, obviously, there is, you know, some council direction that come with that. I think the change that we discussed was that they, whether or not they needed to sort of have a bricks and mortar location, or if they're just registered as a nonprofit operating out of Coon Rapids, which may be a distinction without a difference for most operations. But in the event that there were some nonprofit that didn't have a physical location but still provided service, trying to think of an example of what that might be, but maybe, you know, they're just borrowing space from another tenant and not paying for that, and so technically, they don't have a space, but they are operating as a nonprofit, but perhaps registered under the Secretary of State's jurisdiction as operating within Coon Rapids. You know, there are probably very many of those, but certainly it might avoid some conflict if that were the case.
And my assumption was that by saying it's domiciled in the city of Coon Rapids, they have to exist in Coon Rapids even if they don't have a physical presence or a physical store that they own.
Like they're based here.
That was the intent, and I
Okay.
I don't know if that's where everyone else was. I thought that's what came out of that, the workshop, so I just wanted to throw it out there. And if that's not what we want to do, we can go back to the wording exactly as is.
So, councilmember Demmer, would you read that again? Because I think I misunderstood what, how you phrased that.
Oh, so, so what I said, so I basically just moved a little bit around. So applicant must be locally owned, operated, and domiciled in the city of Coon Rapids, Minnesota. That would be the end of the first sentence, and then if there's a parent organization or second location outside, the rest would stay the same.
Okay, all right. That was, and that was, I missed deleting the physical presence. Yeah.
And once you delete the physical presence part, then it's really weird to have state of Minnesota in the city of Coon Rapids. It sounds like we're doing a proclamation.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
Yeah, and I guess I understood it a little bit differently. I think I'm pretty close to what councilmember Demmer is talking about, where I thought we had talked about where that entity didn't have to own or have leased space in a physical, but they needed to have a physical presence within the community. And so if that's where we're going to say domiciled, is that physical presence? But that they need, that there needed to be someplace that you could go that wasn't, because we didn't want it to be a home business, 501(c)(3), right? And so that was part of that conversation, and I'm not sure if changing the language would mean I could have a home-based 501(c)(3) eligible, because I thought we said we didn't want that. So that's my confusion.
Okay, and I thought the home part was for businesses, and I guess I didn't know if it mattered for a nonprofit.
I thought we were saying that we didn't want a home-based nonprofit to be part of it, so that's my concern.
Mr. Stemwaddle?
So, mayor, council, the first bullet under eligibility criteria is really speaking to that you're owned, operated, and domiciled in the state. And then it goes on to discuss that you have an establishment in Coon Rapids. And I think that language is primarily borrowed from the business
Right.
application. So perhaps what we need to strike there is that you're an applicant locally owned, operated, and domiciled in the state of Minnesota with direct service to the city of Coon Rapids, which is getting specific to that you're providing nonprofit service to Coon Rapids and Coon Rapids residents and businesses perhaps, but that you're a legal entity of the state of Minnesota is really what the first piece is talking about.
Right, I thought that was what we were trying to avoid, because then absolutely every Minnesota place could come to us.
Right.
And then there's somebody else's issue, not ours.
Right, good point.
So I'm okay with leaving it exactly as is. If it's too hard to write on the fly, I just worried about the, you know. Let's say somebody does run a legitimate 501(c)(3) on the internet out of their house. They collect money, they use that money, and they turn around and they help people, and somehow they end up with non, you know, with reimbursable expenses. I guess I wouldn't be against giving them money if they could come up with those, just because they get their, you know, they're running out of their house. It seems a little different than running a business out of your house to me if you're actually then turning around and providing those services to the community, so. But then again, I would consider that a physical establishment, right? There's, I can point to the address. So that doesn't bother me, and I don't think it really matters how we change it, unless we want to specifically forbid something. I think you'd be able to get to that with these guidelines either way.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
Maybe this is the question directed at Mr. Brody. Could we leave it as it is and have a caveat put in that should a applicant not fully meet the criteria, that there's some way to appeal it, to say that they aren't a physical establishment, and have that be the only criteria that somebody could say, hey, this is why I'm not really physical? And that we would treat it on a case-by-case basis, because I'm not sure if there are going to be any instances that really come up.
I don't think so, yeah.
So I guess I'm fine leaving it the way it is, but.
Mayor, council, maybe what I would suggest then in that vein is just that, you know, these are the guidelines.
Guidelines.
Right, and so if there is an extenuating circumstance, you could, in theory, empower the city manager, or perhaps if it's really that unique, I would bring it back to, we'd have two council meetings prior, well, one after the application period closed. So if it was that unique, I could bring it back to you all prior to that. But that there's flexibility within the guidelines to make a discretionary decision on if we think it meets the intent of our program or not.
There he goes again, grabbing onto more power.
City manager's directive to
Okay, is the council okay with that?
Yes.
Yeah, so I'll make the motion then to just do it without any changes to everyone. All right. Ah, let's see. Move that the council approve the attached guidelines for the Coon Rapids Nonprofit Relief Grant Program and authorize the city manager to approve the grant agreements and final total expenditures of the CARES Act funds for this purpose. Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Geisler. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Gervas Govia?
Is it clear who's going to administer this program for the city outlined in here? I thought it was going to be the same as the business relief grant program. Is that?
Mayor, council, so this is actually, staff felt a lot less complicated than going through some of the financials of the business program. So we're planning to do this in-house and not use CMDC to process these applications. So based on the information we're asking for, we can make a pretty reasonable determination if they have eligible expenses. So we'll be utilizing some of our finance staff and others to make those determinations and approve those.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other discussion? Do we have a motion and a second on this?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, I thought we did. I moved my sheet and I wasn't sure. All right, so we have a motion and a second. No further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, and that motion carries. And we are up to open-mic public comments. Anybody want to address counsel for open-mic? Grant, Chris? No? All right.
Nobody answered.
Okay, we'll move beyond open-mic, and we don't have any reports on previous open mics. It was alluded to that maybe we would get an update on the CARES Act business grants in other business. Mr. Frenelius, we're determined to get you up to that mic.
Mayor and council, yes, as we discussed earlier this evening at the work session, that was referenced, we did provide an update to council on the Small Business Assistance Program that the council authorized previously. So we had set aside 1.6 million dollars, as the council is aware, for that program. We received, so we had an application window from September 1st to, I think, the 19th, if I have those dates correctly. So we had a total of 90 applications and a total of 1.4 million dollars in requests. Now, as we talked about at the work session, through the process of evaluating those applications with CMDC, which is the agency that's helping us process those, there've been some adjustments to that process. So right now, of the 90 applications, if I have the numbers correctly, about 30 of them are at the point where they're ready to be processed, we're ready to enter into grant agreements. There were a handful of applications that we had received where applicants didn't meet the criteria that we had, that we had established. So some of those fell out. I think that was about seven in total. So roughly 83 applications is what we were working with, 30 of those we have processed. So the balance of those applications, whatever that, whatever that difference is, 53. CMDC and city staff are trying to reach out to those applications. We did ask for financial information to verify that they, you know, meet the criteria, had a hardship. So we're in the process of gathering that information. Hopefully, we'll collect it within the next week. We've talked about a deadline of, I think, middle of next week in order to gather that information up. Because as the council is aware, we have to spend this money by November 15th, so we actually have to get it out the door. So we're already at, what, October 7th, so we don't have a whole lot of time to spend those dollars. So anyway, I, you know, I think we're pleased at the staff level with the response. What we didn't talk about in the work session, and I wanted to mention, I didn't get an opportunity to do so, is that, you know, there was a lot of PPP money that came into Coon Rapids. I can provide that to the city manager for your weekly update, but there was close to 400 PPP loans that were provided in Coon Rapids. It's a little difficult to determine the exact amount, but to give you a range, anywhere between 50 and 100 million dollars worth of PPP money went into Coon Rapids. Now, remember, that was to keep people employed, so obviously, that program ran out. And I think it illustrates the importance of the small business program that we have now in operation to help, to help those businesses continue to operate, because I think that need is going to continue well into the future. So hopefully, that answered the question about our program.
Very good.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
Just a couple of clarifications, just to make sure. I'm pretty sure it's done. So those couple of businesses, those seven or so that fell out, I'm assuming that those have been contacted to let them know that they were not eligible? That we've had communications back with those businesses?
I assume that's the case, but I don't know that for sure, that they've been contacted at this point, but they certainly will be.
Okay, and then for the, those that don't have all of their paperwork in and stuff, that we're looking at that deadline, can we assure that everybody that gets a notification that says, here is your deadline, you have to have your information here for us to consider that? Because if not, those funds go elsewhere, right? And just to make sure, so if you are a business out there that has submitted something, make sure if you are getting contacts from the city or the group doing this for us, that you are responding, because we need your complete application before we could do any grant application.
That's a good point, and, you know, we are, CMDC and city staff are calling these businesses, you know, so we're not trying to send it through the email. We're using multiple means to make sure that they're aware of what they need to submit. So hopefully, we'll capture all that information so that, you know, nobody falls out of the process.
Great.
Excellent, thank you. So we got an email today that said it was the last day of the farmer's market. Was that the case? Or was it just because the weather was so nice?
Mayor, council, I think the intent was it's probably the last day of the farmer's market. I mean, typically, it wraps up around this time of year. I think there was a crack in the door that was left open in case, you know, things work out and there's interest by the vendors and the weather turns out. But yes, either way, the farmer's market will be wrapping up soon, if it hasn't already, given the time of year.
All right, and then Ms. Lenzmeyer, voting at City Hall, still during regular hours at the Civic Center, correct?
Mr. Mayor, that is correct. We are available for in-person absentee voting, Monday through Friday, 8 to 4:30. So come see us if you'd like to vote in person.
And absentee voting goes through what date? Do you remember?
Right up through the day before the election, November 2nd. But we switch from the envelope process to direct balloting, where you can insert your ballot into the machine, starting on October 27th.
That was the date I was wondering about, direct ballot. Okay. Thank you. And then I've got only one other question, and that was...
Mr. Mayor?
Counselmember Geisler?
Just to follow up on the election pieces?
Sure, go ahead.
And so, just as another clarification, so anybody who requested an absentee ballot to be mailed to their home, they can mail it back, or they can drop it back off at City Hall. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Geisler, that is correct. We have a locked box down in the Civic Center monitored by our election judges that you can bring your ballot and deposit into, and we will process it.
So you don't need to put it in the mail?
So you don't need to put it in the mail. And if you haven't requested it, you don't have to request it as an absentee. You can actually just come in and fill out the form here at City Hall. So I wanted to make sure that you've got a couple of options on how you get that absentee ballot, whether it's in your mail, drop it off, mail it back. Lots of ways to vote.
That's correct.
I voted every way.
In different years.
Not in the same election.
Only once per year, though.
One way per election.
Tomato, tomato.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Landsmeier?
One last thing on the election.
Yes.
The Secretary of State's office has a website, mnvotes.org. Once you cast your absentee ballot, you can click on Track My Absentee Ballot. Within five days, you should be able to see the status of your ballot. So it's kind of a cool feature we're rolling out.
All right. Excellent. I guess that was all I had. Other business to come before council?
Aye.
Counsel, uh, Mr. Counselmember Wells?
Just like to mention, I did the open house at Center Homes at Riverwalk, and they look beautiful. And for, for a lot of us that have been waiting a lot of years, and they're selling really well. So that tells me that the people are interested. So, that's great.
Excellent. Great to hear.
Hi, Your Honor.
Counselmember Demmer? Oh, go ahead. Chief, Chief Wise, go ahead.
Yeah, right. Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, timing-wise, but before we left, too, I wanted to talk about Night to Unite last night.
Okay.
Because it was our modified, it's okay that I talk about it now?
Go ahead.
All right. So ordinarily, the first Tuesday of August is reserved for Night to Unite, where we talk about building stronger neighborhoods to help prevent against crime. Given coronavirus, this year, we put it off till October in hopes that we'd be able to host the event like normal. Obviously, world events didn't allow that to happen. So we did a virtual Night to Unite. And a bunch of officers, along with Steph Ring from the Communications Department, put a lot of effort into making a program that was live on Facebook. And I wanted to highlight that it's findable on Facebook under Coon Rapids Police, or come to the Police Department page on the city website. And you can see a lot of the things that, that you saw for our Citizens Academy. We had a K-9 demo, a squad car tour. There's some stuff from the Fire Department, which I really don't like to talk about. Oh, I'm just, I'm just kidding. Chief Wise is a good guy. No, but anyway, it was a, a great overview. The officers were fantastic. The event was very well received. We got a lot of positive comments. Truthfully, we made lemonade from lemons. And, and I think if somebody has sort of a generalized interest in what Coon Rapids Police are all about, you can get a really good sense of that for an hour and 15-minute investment in your time. But let's hope that next year, we can go back to August, the first Tuesday in August, and, and visit with our community in person. That's our hope. Thank you.
Absolutely. And we did actually see on social media how well the Coon Rapids Police Department works with the Coon Rapids Fire Department with the deer up at Balfany Farms that had his head stuck in that milk can. That was pretty cool. So that was fun to follow. And then literally the next day on Channel 4, they've got a picture of a deer with his head stuck in a hammock in Coon Rapids. And you're going, what is, is that the same deer or what? Counselmember Demmer, I'm sorry.
Oh, no problem. It's been so long since we've had a council meeting that, you know, normally I just remind everyone, people are back in school now. So kids are back in school. So, you know, if you're out there driving, remember that it's getting dark earlier and, and then there are kids out and about. And even though a lot of people have spent the last, I don't know, six months driving really fast and knowing nobody's on the road, there are people out there again. So please remember that and be careful. Stop if the stop sign's out at the bus.
Mr. Stemwaddle?
Mayor Council, it's always fun to announce something where people actually do gather and do something within state guidelines, of course. But I want to mention that on Saturday, October 17th, the city, in conjunction with the Coon Rapids Community Strength Foundation, will be hosting the pumpkin patch at Sand Creek Athletic Complex from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And it's a free event, and you can get one free pumpkin per child 12 and under, which is a change from what was in the newsletter, which said one pumpkin per family. But due to some additional support, they were apparently able to buy us some more pumpkins. And so they'll be available. So you can visit that. Again, that was October 17th from 10 to 1:00 p.m.
Great. Excellent. Sounds fun. All right. Other business to come before council?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselmember Scovia.
I had a question today on, on a road construction project, so maybe I can ask Public Works. But Hanson is done. They're along 121st, and that looks great. But I was wondering if there's an update on the status of the road project at River, Riverdale Drive over there by the Walmart and everything like that. I had a client with a small business contact me saying that their road was closed without any public notice, and that caused them some problems, of course. And so they asked me to get an update on that.
Sure. Counselmember Scovia, counsel. I received the email as well. I actually made a phone call to the business owner. I, I only got a voicemail, but I left her a message. Yes, that project, we're, we're going to get the wear cor, or the, the base course down tomorrow. So by noon tomorrow, the, that section of road will be open. We still have to do the wear course. It, it was an unfortunate situation and a really poor miscommunication to not notify. But there was a safety concern, as everyone knows, that little stretch right between Round Lake and the entrance into the main shopping area, that a call had to be made to, to just, let's, let's just hammer this out and get it done. Unfortunately, they didn't say, let's start that on Thursday and spend a day or two notifying business owners. They just, I'll say, we dropped the ball on that one. And, and we didn't provide what we typically would. But I'll let you know that that will not happen again. And the project will wrap up, like I said, tomorrow. And then they'll come back with the wear course probably in about a week or so, is my understanding. And then it's just some restoration beyond that. So hopefully, all the dusty, dirty, noisy stuff will be behind us, not only there, but in most of our other projects.
Thank you. And those business also mentioned, I mean, that's, that's a nice project. Overdue, of course. And with that sidewalk in there, that's going to help them a lot. So, yeah, it looks like, it looks like it's really looking nice over there. And, and Coon Rapids Boulevard, the resurfacing of Coon Rapids Boulevard is primarily done. And it's wonderful to drive on. And instantly, I thought, oh, man, we're going to have speeding issues.
That was the other...
Yeah, because you just, it just flowed down the road, whereas you were always aware of how fast you were going before.
That was the other thing I was going to bring up. That looks really nice.
Yep, it really does.
And, you know, I got to say that it really makes me think, we got to, I mean, A, get that bridge built. But if we can't get that bridge built, get that trail fixed up, because now all of a sudden, the road looks so much nicer than the stuff just on the side of the road. So the, the trail from the bridge around the, the clay hole is, you know, it's, it's okay. But it's nowhere near as nice as the road currently is.
I, I can give an update on that, Mr. Mayor. Counselmember Demo, there, there was some damage. I mean, it's an old trail in that segment. There was some damage that occurred through the Met Council project, as well as the, the road reconstruction project. We intend to replace that segment all the way down to the bridge, with the Met Council participating in that. But that won't happen until spring. We're going to do a little patching to fix up the really bad spots, but it, it will be replaced next year.
And, and spring is great. I, I do think, though, that, you know, we've got that old service bridge, the, the yellow painted bridge. If we're repairing that area anyway, it might be an interesting place to put something a little bit, you know, marquee or fancy, since that's what the Riverwalk people are going to be staring at. So, I don't know. While, while you're in there, maybe there's something we could do there to gussy that up a little.
Well, we also had a bid package that we were going to redo that bridge, fix the crumbling concrete, put, put a fresh coat of paint on it. We actually went out and got quotes on that earlier this year to try to do it at the same time as the project. We received one bid, and it was higher than we anticipated. So that will be coming to you probably in the next month or two, to, to go out for a public bid on that and have that cleaned up as well as, as a next-year project. So it's, it's already in the works.
Great.
Well, while we're down in that area, and before we start gussy-ing things up, I like that. Actually, I had somebody the other day that was complaining about the smell coming from the clay hole.
Was that me? Was I complaining to you?
What?
I don't think it's the clay hole. I think it's that lift station.
It's the lift station.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, so we're not going to fix that by putting a fountain on it, then?
No.
Mr. Mayor, that's a continuation of, of that. So there's bypass pumping going on. That, that's what you're, that's what you're smelling. And Met Council's doing a lot of, a lot of things, not only there, but then they'll be doing all the way back here behind City Hall, all the way. So over the next few years, there'll be a lot of that with the rehab line going on down there. And through that whole...
So let's not consider a fountain on the lift station, but I was wondering, I'm sure you don't want that. About the, about the clay hole, you know, that would be a nice water feature to, to, to do something interesting with, since we're not going to swim in it anymore.
So that, that has been something that I've been pushing since I got on the council, which is to turn that into a feature where it becomes an attraction again. And, and I've got some ideas along those lines that I've talked to Mr. Stemwaddle about in the past. But I think especially once we get a pedestrian bridge in, which I hope will happen sometime in the future, you know, it all makes that a really attractive neighborhood.
I think we should do this separate from the pedestrian bridges.
Oh, yeah. We can do this one whenever.
You can do it whenever. Oh, very good. Any other business to come before council this evening? All right.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Kicker, second by Demmer to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned.